All right, you got anything to add to the agenda?
The only adding that got added at the end was reinstated Jessica Lillers of Port Com, 911 Dispatch.
I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, I'll send that home soon. Minutes from your previous meeting?
I'll make a motion, we waived proven the minutes for this meeting for January 27th until the next meeting, just because we just got them and I'm going to read through them.
All right.
You just want to move it to the end when you do your Trump sayables. You're second.
Need a second, I'll stack it. We can do it anytime. All right, so we're down to public comments.
Before we get into that, I'd like to say something, I have something to do. I'm making a motion that be Commissioner Stacks to have control of the floor until you control the floor or there is a motion passed that I have been forced to yield control of the floor.
No, repeat that.
I have a motion that I have control of the floor until I yield control of the floor or there is a motion passed to force me to yield control of the floor.
I second that.
Okay. Now I have some things to say. We have some housework to do. First off, I want to address our commission meetings and how they are supposed to have been handled. And we do have public comment sections, we do take appointments. These public comment sections are supposed to be organized and smooth. So when they get to the public comment and they call out your name, you want to speak, you come up to the podium, you speak your name, any organization you're with, and you are given three minutes to speak, that's what we had talked about before, three minutes and you'll be on a timer. When the timer's up, we may yield and let you continue or you may be stopped. That's, that's our discretion as commissioners. These meetings are for us to conduct business of the county. They are public meetings, so the public is welcome here and we love to have you here. But we got to keep the discussion and the conversations down to a minimum to get, so that we can conduct the business or else it is interfering with government process. The, if you make an appointment, I believe we have been giving five minutes for those that make appointment and a lot of times those are more detailed, sometimes they can be, we can respond or there will be questions or whatever. But basically the same thing, you come up to the podium, you state your name, your organization you're with, and you conduct your business when you have that opportunity. We have not discussed how to handle the Zoom and we will discuss that at a later date in a future meeting, at the next meeting, but I'll get to that in a minute. Move on. I do have some things to say and it's hard. It's going to be really hard for you. I just need everybody's patience and understanding. We all know, everybody makes mistakes. And most people in here, I would assume, understands that the Bible tells us that there was one man that walked this earth without sin or without mistake and they crucified him. I'm definitely not that man and I make mistakes and I have made mistakes. And I'm apologizing to the citizens of Mineral County, to the elected officials, their employees, the Sheriff's Department employees, 911 employees. I got everything written down, but I'm jumping around here already, so please bear with me again. I really owe a personal apology to my cousin Randy because he told me time and time and time again and warned me. So I'll stop there and I'm going to jump over to a little history with me. When I was elected, I did research and came to meetings, tried to learn best. I came into office January 1, 23. And I, I was at 52 years old at that time. I had a life of blue collar work, working at a paper mill for 24 years and different jobs, doing excavating, worked with my dad. And when the mill shut down in 19, I just took my excavating business full time. Politics was a completely different world, other than reading what's in the paper or seeing the news or social media. So it was a completely different world for me. So when I stepped in as commissioner, I looked up to the three people that was up here or the two people that I worked with the first couple of years. Listened to them, heard stories about how they, how the county was in financial distress and how they got it out. And I felt these guys know what they're doing. I need to listen, need to watch, keep my head down and learn. I was able to reach out to other counties, went to some conferences, made a lot of connections throughout the state with other commissioners and other, and other counties and was able to learn what they did, some of the problems they faced. And I've seen commissioners where commissioners were at each other all the time and, and just, it just wasn't good. And I wanted to fit in and I wanted to be part of that and I wanted to, I wanted our leadership to be strong in this county and I wanted everything to run smooth. And throughout that whole time, I was recorded, I was, I was warned, repeatedly warned by one person. Repeatedly. First two years of my commission, I defended this man to no end. Defended him to everybody. Past year's been rough, but I still defended him. I still looked out for him. I still had his back. Until last week. Last week, that all changed. Last week, I felt like I got blindsided. I didn't think that meeting would happen like that. That was totally yellow line. Meeting was on telephone. And it's really a shame, really big shame that I was in Charleston and people knew about that meeting. Just, just this past weekend, just got back today. I heard, you know, all kinds of names, like it was a clown show and a S H, S H I T show and the really, not a good one, but the really good one I heard was that it was like a kindergarten rock, kindergarten romper room where all the bullies were picking on two people. And that's a shame. I'm embarrassed, I am truly, truly embarrassed. Roger, you should be too, for working straight in that event.
No, you stop right there. You stop right there. Now I've got something, I gotta say.
I still have the floor, please.
I don't care what you've got.
I still.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say one thing to me.
Commissioner Leatherman, I have the floor.
Right there it is, stand order. Now I want to, I want.
Commissioner Leatherman, I have the floor. No, I will not. Commissioner Leatherman, I have the floor.
This man right here made a comment at the north end of the county, which he, he, these two swore to last week. And then I'm going to shut my mouth once I tell this. I, I've got somebody that's willing to testify. He was in the north end of the county and made a comment, quote unquote, and four or five days, we're going to fire somebody in the county. And they said here last week, swore on a Bible that they never had meetings prior to. You got the floor, explain it.
Not every thought anybody that.
Oh, I got a witness says you did.
That never happened. Anyway. However, I'm going to address several rates, several issues that were raised. I'm not going to get into all of the details of that meeting, but there were some issues that was raised in that meeting. First thing that, that Mr. Leatherman keeps bringing up is the chase car and how over budget we are. When everything was started, we knew what the startup cost was being. We were able to use opioid funding to help fund that, fund that startup. And the cardiac monitor was the biggest hit on that. The cardiac monitor was, I'm drawing a blank now, 70, 60, 70?
Plus the ventricle, any process.
Okay.
Package.
So, so anyway, let's say, let's say $70,000. You pay $70,000 for a piece of equipment and you keep saying, oh, that $70,000 you're spending the money. Okay, $70,000, you got the equipment, you got a, a top notch piece of equipment that was the first in this state, the, the number one. Anybody that has a business, when you buy a big piece of equipment like that, you put that over several years. So if it has a life expectancy of 10 years, you spread that out over 10 years, that's $7,000 a year. You're still under the $18,000 that we predicted you would save in payroll.
You didn't predict we'd save it in payroll. You said, you predicted we would save 18,000 overall.
Payroll. Anyway. Second thing I want to mention is the physician buydown. The physician buydown was used with opioid money. That got Dr. Curvos in our county for training. Instead of her working in an ER room, she was in our county, she's in our county 50 hours a month, plus I believe she does more time than that. That, that she trains our EMTs and medics, hands-on training that this gives this county. She does not get another red penny in her pocket. She would either be working in the emergency room or she would be working for us, training people. And she does a great job. The EMTs and medics around here respect her and listen to her. And I'll give you one case, as far as I'm concerned. There was a call at the beginning of her training, she was with a squad one day, a couple of young medics in that squad, they got a call for an unresponsive toddler. And they went and worked on that toddler for 20 minutes. She was right there, she was able to talk those medics through, she was able to work with them, keep them calm, cool and collected. She was able to be right there to give orders instead of having to use the phone to go through MedCom. They saved that child's life, they saved that toddler's life. And I can't really go into the specifics of all of it, I would love to, but I can't go into the specifics because I don't want to get in any legal trouble and that. But nonetheless, that child is alive today and no brain damage and he was technically dead for 20 minutes. But they, but because of their CPR, because of their training and what they did, and she was able to keep them, young medics, cool and calm and collected, they saved that boy's life. Me, that right there, I don't care how much money we put into that, that right there pays for it, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
Third, I want to address the meeting conduct. Last week, especially last week. So most of yous watched it, I would imagine. But what really funny part was, not funny, nothing's funny here, none of this is funny, I'm sorry. So the biggest part to me, what really showed to me was towards the end of it. Mr. Lakens come into the room and sat down, waited patiently, had an opportunity to speak and started to talk. Somebody behind him spoke up, all he said was, excuse me, I have the floor. That was all he said. Mr. Leatherman jumped down Mr. Lakens throat because he was the, it's recorded, Roger?
Well, you, you got on him for being disrespectful.
I am not done.
You got on him for being disrespectful.
When I'm done, they was sitting there about, in that area right there and he was sitting here in front. And when I looked at both of them and the one was my granddaughter and I told, I said, be respectful. I didn't direct my, did I say your name? No, I did not.
Yeah, you did.
No, I didn't. Read it, read it. Look at it. I looked at both of them and I said, be respectful. And if you can't be respectful, that's tough. I meant for both of them.
Anyway. You all get my point?
Yeah.
Finally, I want to bring up one other thing. And I really get to my point. Several months ago, Jason brought up a suggestion that he wanted to look into. And it was a mowing contract for, for the random and 911. And Jason suggested that we could hire an employee for what we're paying for this contract. So we're paying this contractor roughly $40,000 a year to mow grass. For 40, Lauren corrected, 45, we can hire an employee. 37, 37,000, we can hire an employee. And then we would have an employee all year long and we have equipment. They may need some work done to them because they've been sitting, but we have equipment that, that can be used. So why would we want to pay $40,000 for a contract? Or pay 37,000 to have an employee that we can have all year long and have an extra maintenance guy in the process? Taken together, all of these examples bring serious concern about judgment conflicts of interest, meaning management and the ability to conduct county business effectively and professionally. How, you may ask? Well, it has come to my attention that the Commissioner Leatherman has regular lunch dates with a person or people who are high at Valley Medical.
Lunch dates?
The law on mowing contract is through his son-in-law. And the person that interrupted Mr. Lakens was his granddaughter, as well as Mr. Lakens was talking in agreement with the termination of Luke McKenzie. Because of these concerns and in the best interest of Mineral County, I seriously am asking Roger that he needs to step down as president of the county commission.
So you can control this county?
I also believe he should seriously consider whether contending to serve as a commissioner in the county is in the best interest. No, not me controlling, me and him and whoever, if you step down, whoever replaces you.
Question for you, you get done, you go on. I knew this was coming. Backstabber.
Are you kidding me?
Yes, sir.
Seriously? I did you for free. Oh, I gotta go. Are you, are you resigning?
Worth it.
No, I'm not resigning, absolutely not. Certainly not, take a break.
This is ridiculous.
Make a motion, we recessed for 10 minutes.
Very good.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Yeah, you second. Mercy carry.
I want to make 10 minutes, please, when you come back. One question when you come back. I knew this was coming, I was.
We're in recess, right?
The meeting going to recess.
Huh?
The meeting going to recess.
Yeah, I can voice my opinion wherever I want to.
Actually, you're wrong. Robert's rules.
Every, every Robert's rules?
You voice your opinion, you don't count it, nobody cares.
Thank you, sir.
Robert's rules, yeah, especially if a thing is wrong. When it recesses, don't nobody say nothing, you're not allowed. Right?
Ladies and gentlemen, I sincerely apologize for that out first. Sometimes things just go through you.
I make a motion, we've come out of recess.
I'll second that motion. All right. Lauren, on the next mission meeting agenda, I'd like to have this put on towards the beginning of the agenda. Discuss, remove Commissioner Leatherman as president of the Mineral County Commission. And follow that up with elect new president of the Mineral County Commission. Also down under new business, I wanted to discuss the mowing contract for 911 and the random such as repost for bids or hire additional manpower. Also want to have, discuss, approve, modify policy on public comment and appointments. I'm not going to do that, I had others down if you want to. I can give that to you. And then discuss, approve, modify policy on boards and appointments as to requiring interviews and or resumes and posting openings. Now. I would like to move along with the public comment section, can I have the paper, please?
Can I ask a question? I'm not signed up to speak.
Okay.
You said, and I quote, about having that meeting, or we talked about bringing it up. You got me upset, I can't remember what I was going to say. What did I ask you about, Lauren?
It was at the work session.
Yeah, and it was not at the work session. So what did you two do, meet behind the doors? What are you talking about? You said you was going to bring up, what did I ask you about? Yes, it was only agenda.
The mowing, just like it was on the work session.
Yes, and it was not. So where did you two come up with this?
What, the mowing?
Yeah.
Several months ago, when Jason mentioned it in an open meeting.
I don't remember that, is it in the minutes?
Do you remember that, Jason?
I don't have the date or anything, but I just wanted to know.
Several months.
Does that even remember?
I'm sure you recall that as well, Lauren. Okay. So, so the mission I made at the beginning of the meeting, from my understanding, does give me control of this meeting until I yield or there is a motion passed that remanquish me to yield. So I will be handling the meeting from here on out. I will tell you all that we do have a lot going on and we have a lot of things to go over. So I'm going to burn through a lot of it. However, so we have a public comment section. First we have listed on here is Craig Cox. Yes, Ken, you want to do it? We don't. They say great minds think alike and I think that's true. Last week was a total embarrassment to this county. The way the meeting was run or not run.
Roger, that's all right, you can say what you want.
That's fine. Robert's rules went out the window, any kind of parliamentary procedure went out the window. It was a total embarrassment. I went to Charleston and the Secretary of State's office knew about this meeting.
I know, I know how they found out about it.
Me, because I told them.
Well, there was somebody else.
No, it was me and I'll admit to it in an open meeting, it was me.
See what you want, I know where.
And then I'm going to re-integrate that with Commissioner Stacks says, I'm going to formally request you resign from this commission tonight.
I'm not resigning from nothing, you got that, because I've been asked by, by Joe not to resign, am I correct? Didn't you ask me not to resign from this commission?
Tonight?
No, 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 you asked me the other day. Up to 911 Center. And I'm not resigning, so do what you want to.
Okay. Pertinent to state code 667 little B, there is three ways to remove an elected official on a statement.
They're being worked on right now, two of them is.
Um, one is by a proclamation by the commission, which I mean, that's not going to happen, I wouldn't put the other two commissioners in that spot like someone else has. The second one is by a prosecuting attorney, again, I would not put him in that position. The third is by petition of either 10% of the last vote when you were elected or 500, whichever is lesser. Okay? Well, there was 11,747 people voted when you got elected. I researched that today because unlike most people, I research things I talk about and I talk fact, not opinion. So I have right here in my hand, a petition and I plan on being the first county employee to sign it to remove you from this commission. And once, once that 500 names is done, it will be presented to circuit court by state code and the circuit judge will appoint a three judge panel to investigate it.
Great, I hope they do all the investigation very, very deep.
Sir, all it is, is you and just about 90% of what's on this paper is recorded.
So let me answer.
I have the floor and I have three minutes and she has not told me my three minutes is up. Again, no parliamentary procedure, Roger. I learned that as a freshman in high school in the FFA. No, you haven't. You cannot give an opinion from the chair, you cannot interrupt someone who has a floor. That's day one parliamentary procedure.
Keep talking.
And these are the reasons, and I don't want it to be a surprise, so here's the reasons, threatening our medical director, Dr. Curvos. For 47 minutes, she had recording of you threatening her. You're going to run her out of this county, she's going to spend all the money, she's going to try to put A D M S in this county. It's recorded, Roger, it's recorded. She's got it and you will hear it when the judges, the three panel judges. Wrongly accusing Colby Simpson of stealing funds from Mineral County AM Authority.
That was a lie, we talked about it, Colby.
That's not a lie. You told. And we can have Chris Quinn come testify to that. Belittling Commissioners Whitlock and Stags in that last open meeting and letting it allow, allowing it. Yes. Can I yield the chair for a few more minutes?
I'll give you two more minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Are you okay with that, Jason?
I am.
Okay. Belittling these other two commissioners in an open meeting and having all of your family here do the same and not controlling the meeting whatsoever.
I did not, granted.
Okay. Not having any control over meetings, either commission meeting or the public, the public service commission meeting that was held a short gap station, and that's also reported. The refusal to recuse yourself in voting on matters involving family working for the county to include both your sons, your grandson-in-law, the former 911 director and your son-in-law who is a contractor. Total disregard for agendas and not following them. Um, total disregard for agendas and not following them. No use of parliamentary procedure and angry outburst of meetings against citizens for no good cause in rea- in, in reason. That's my reasoning for this petition, and I'm going to be the first right here on live YouTube to assign it.
Sign it. Pass it to the right.
Roger, you're a total embarrassment to this county.
I never lied.
You did, and you repeatedly lied.
What did I lie about? I gotta, now, now, three minutes is up.
Thank you, Commissioner Stag.
Was, could you answer what I lied about?
I told you right here.
What did I lie about? I like to hear it.
There's forty-seven minutes of you threatening this young lady right here.
You never threatened her. I've never talked to her one time for forty-seven minutes.
Yes, you did. Last.
Remember the phone in February of twenty forty-five?
You mean, that's when I told you I was at Walmart and I did not threaten you. Say that message.
I will happily do so when it's my turn if that's asked of me, but I have something more important for my turn. It's not my turn.
Well, if it's forty-seven minutes, I don't think we want to hear it. Now, I think we should save it for the.
So, all right, I'm going to move in right here. Uh, next I have on the list is Rhett Puesenberry.
Commissioners, as you know, I'm Rhett Duesenberry, District Representative for Congressman Riley Moore. Uh, the reason I rise tonight, uh, is to basically just reinform y'all that, uh, we will be getting the hard copy out for the community, uh, project spending. Uh, that'll be coming here in the next week or two. And we will also, the congressman's office and staff will be offering a Zoom call for any questions that may come up that you may like answers to. But, uh, otherwise, as usual, we're always ready to get a layer of support for grants and also, uh, ready to help constituents of Mineral County any way possible that the congressman can. And, uh, I'll yield back to balance my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhett. Appreciate you guys starting. Always, always good to hear from you and, and Roger here and helping us out. I appreciate that. And I apologize. I said Puesenberry instead of Duesenberry, so I would.
Well, that's my fault. I'm jokingly saying one of the members of the butchered last things club.
Sure. So to go down this list, the next yes that I see that you want to speak is, is Dr. Kerboz.
I don't know if this is three minutes, but my request is that I might be able to read my statement here on this paper in its entirety, and that's all. That's okay. So, good evening, Commissioners and members of our community. For anyone who may not know me, my name's Catherine Kerboz. I'm Dr. Catherine Kerboz, Medical Director for Mineral County. I am here tonight to address you not only as your county medical director, but as someone who's grown deeply invested in Mineral County EMS, responsible in every single volunteer agency that serves this county. When I was approached to take on this role of EMS Medical Director for Mineral County, I did not know exactly what to expect. What I can say with certainty is that I never expected the division, misinformation, and concern that is currently circulating. My goal here today is to provide my formal statement, my formal statement regarding EMS in this county, as well as clearly define the goals of Mineral County EMS, whom I'm the director for. The purposes for Response One are chase vehicle in this community. In doing so, I hope that everyone is now on the exact same page regarding this topic, ceasing all speculation, gossip, hearsay, or misinformation that could be spread about the intentions of myself, our employees, or this agency. My very first task after accepting this position was simple. I went to each volunteer agency and I asked one question. What do you need from your medical director? While some comments involved equipment or tangible resources, the overwhelming response was not about any of that at all. It was about involvement. Every agency voiced the same desire. They wanted an involved medical director, one who would show up, one who would teach, one who would learn alongside them, one who respected their craft. The common theme was clear. Our EMS providers wanted to feel seen, feel heard, be seen, and be respected. I heard them. I saw the years of dedication they poured into this county long before my arrival, and I made it my mission to elevate the respect our volunteers deserve, not just locally, but across our state. Let me be very clear. Our providers are not just volunteers. There's nothing just about them. They are the lifeline of this community. They work full-time jobs to support their families and then answer nine one one calls on their own time, in the middle of the night, on holidays, during family dinners, because someone needed help. Over the past eighteen months, my goal has been to support that growth, not replace it, not overshadow it, but strengthen it. Together through the ambulance authority, we voted to implement a standard of running at least two calls per month in some medical capacity and attend two annual training sessions for providers. We voted to do so. Why? To ensure that when someone in Mineral County calls nine one one, they receive the best care possible, to ensure that in their worst moment, they have full confidence in the people who show up at their door. I also want to clarify something important. I am not the medical director of one agency. I am the medical director for every agency in this county. Ridgely, Wiley Ford, Short Gap, Board Ashby, Fountain, Kaiser, New Creek, Burlington, Elk Garden, Mineral County EMS. My responsibility here is very clear: clinical oversight. I am a board-certified emergency medicine physician, and I'll soon be furthering that as a fellow in emergency medicine services. I have dedicated my entire life to education and this craft. I am an ER doctor at heart, and medicine is all that I've ever wanted to do. Every EMS agency in the nation requires a physician, medical director, to oversee them and run under their medical license. My job is to ensure every EMT and paramedic practices at the highest medical standard consistently and fairly. By bringing the chase vehicle under unified county medical direction this past year, we ensured one standard of care across the board. One medical director, one group of employees hired exclusively from our volunteer agencies, one unified team alongside already thriving volunteer departments. Volunteerism in this county is not dying. I'm going to say that again. Volunteerism in this county is not dying. It is thriving. We've had numerous people choosing to advance their pre-hospital careers this year by becoming EMTs, AEMTs, and paramedics. Our volunteers consistently get out on calls and are providing response times exceeding those of the national standards, including those of paid systems. Response One and Mineral County EMS do not function without volunteers. It never has, and it never will. Mineral County EMS was created to ensure the chase vehicle met West Virginia OEMS standards and to eliminate perception of favoritism, placing it under one neutral entity. In just seven months, it's become so much more. Mineral County EMS does not stand alone. It is one piece of a larger team. Its mission has always been dedication to Mineral County. Response One and Mineral County EMS supports the volunteers. It does not detract from them. In the last year alone, we've hosted numerous high-quality training sessions, attended community events, and volunteered our time to support the very people who support us. We have brought the most advanced equipment to our community, including video laryngoscopy, intravenous pump systems, the most advanced cardiac monitor on the market, a ventilator, and a portable ultrasound. Our crowning achievement so far is the addition of pre-hospital blood product, which is going to save so many lives, and it's already shown that in our very own community. Blood is not just a rarity in our state, but in our country. We are so privileged to have this here in our rural community. This program includes and relies on all providers in this county, both volunteers and chase car. Again, it requires the entire team. Personally, I dedicate fifty point one hours every month to fulfill my buy-down commitment to this county. Regularly, I am exceeding this number by pure choice alone. I do not receive any compensation for this. I am independently contracted as the medical director. I am not hired as a county employee. In other words, there's no pension package, there's no healthcare benefits, no additional cost for any of my services. The salary set forth by the Mineral County Ambulance Authority for the medical director is ten thousand dollars a year. This has been the standard for the position prior to my arrival here as well. I have chosen to donate this salary back to our community in order to use for EMS funds and purchases. Some of my dedicated hours are spent rotting Response One, where I provide direct oversight to our providers, on-scene medical command orders or patient care if needed. Others are spent teaching educational courses, supporting community outreach programs, and encouraging young students to consider careers in medicine. In the last seven months, we have done so much good that I feel should not be overshadowed now. We've welcomed home our Frankfurt State champions on several occasions, sat littles on our laps so they could play with lights and sirens at events, knelt to fill the empty hands of grieving family members, knowing their hands would never be filled by their loved ones again. We've sung to frighten toddlers in the back of ambulances to calm their fear-filled hearts, laughed with longtime members of the Lions Club, cheered on the Kaiser Golden Tornadoes, and throwed as much candy as possible during local parades supporting our community. We've cried on the way home from tragic calls that didn't go the way we hoped, asked why too many times on the hard days, and most importantly, prayed in gratitude to God when we were able to save a life, thanking Him for our gifts, talents, and abilities, and sometimes for just giving us a miracle. This work is not about politics. It's about people. Taking this role as medical director rejuvenated my love for medicine. It reaffirmed my calling as an educator, and it welcomed me into a community that I now proudly call my home. Mineral County has given me the opportunity to bring advanced, evidence-based, technologically progressive care to its citizens, because our citizens deserve the best when they dial nine one one. That's what we are working to provide. That is our goal. That is our purpose. These are the facts. We are proud of this team. We are proud that our employees are also volunteers. We are proud of the care being delivered in this county. I am proud to be part of this county. We do not forget or take for granted where we've come from. We embrace it. We took what was already good, and we've made it great. We'll continue to strive for excellence, because when it comes down to it, Mineral County deserves people who show up, do honest work, and desire to be excellent. If any member of this community has questions, concerns, or simply wants to learn more, we welcome and encourage that conversation, because at the end of the day, EMS does not belong to any one agency. It belongs to the community, and the community is the foundation of it all. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Uh, next on the list to speak is Colby Simpson.
Been the ambulance authority president for several years. I, I was once when I was younger. Things were a lot different. Uh, we had the same amount of money, but things cost less. Um. In the last year, what started out as a conversation that I was having with a couple other department chiefs turned into Mineral County EMS and Response One, um, and a buy-down to opioid funds for a doctor that could put time into training and effort for our citizens here, so we could all do a better job taking care of you. Live here, don't live here, drive through here to work. Gee elevated a game for everybody. January of last year, I, um, I received a phone call, and the phone call stated point-blank, Commissioner Leatherman is telling people that you are stealing ambulance authority funds, running it through a third-party business. I am talking, please.
Well, that's not true.
Well, your opinion.
No, that's fact.
I have witnesses. You have witnesses. I have people who called, that called and told me. Uh, you received a phone call, you had a discussion with somebody, and you came back and you said, I was transferring ambulance authority funds to a third-party vendor that we used to pay for my vacation to Cancun, Mexico, and for a wedding. So I'll just tell you, Cancun cost about thirty-seven hundred dollars, and if I couldn't afford to go to it, I surely wouldn't steal from the Mineral County Ambulance Authority. One, and two, all of the major changes that we made to ambulances last year were voted and approved through the Mineral County Ambulance Authority, and there were a lot of them. Secondly, to repeatedly say that we are going over budget based off of your opinion or opinion of your friends or people that don't like me, people who are going around the county now saying that I am meeting with individuals trying to outright run their business out of town. Um, I, I don't have time for that. I, 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 I'm the chief of the fire department. I'm the president of the ambulance authority, and we have serious work to do. Um. I, I have nothing left to say. I, I didn't steal any money. It's still, but, but, but that's your go-to. You, anytime you're upset with somebody, you point out that they're a thief or they're stealing or, 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 it's not a lie.
I, well, when your three minutes is up, I'm going to address your issue.
Anyway, I don't care what you address.
You don't?
Um, so suffice to say, Response One, without dragging the paperwork out, but we have here, has spent, uh, just shy of fifty thousand dollars on manpower this, this so far, yes. And we have, we have spent seven thousand dollars on supplies that weren't start-up. Fuel is close to the same. Um, but we couldn't park it in the garage up there because there was a lawsuit threatened for parking it in the building, so it has to run all the time when it's outside. Misuse of county funds, a lawsuit you didn't threaten, but the, the, the previous, um, okay, I'm agreeing. It, it is what it is, Roger.
And I talked to you about that, and I made the comment that the individual that showed me, I know where that came from. And I said, I don't believe he would do this, and I don't believe he would steal. I don't, you not believe that.
You told it when it was your advantage.
When it was what?
When it was to your advantage to try and use it, you used it.
No, I didn't. I never called nobody about that.
Roger, you have a question marked by yours. You want to speak or not? Sir, you have a question marked by yours. I'm sure I don't, I, I don't want to just be, okay? Uh, Beth Rubel, you're next. You put yes.
No, I didn't put yes. I thought that was a sign and she, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I told you I had to sign in. That was all I thought of.
Okay. Um. Then we have, uh, where is this? Norm Lonnie? Did Norm Lonnie sign up to speak?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
James, I meant to say, see, the clown shooting.
Yeah, we ran out of lines there, and it got, sorry, Beth.
Name's Norm Lonnie, just a concerned citizen here tonight. Um, I am friends with Roger Leatherman, have been for many years. I have a lot of respect for the man. I do not know his son-in-law more than in passing. I don't think I've ever spent more than, sent more than a hundred dollars to Luke in, uh, all time, even in Georgia. Uh, first off, uh, I see on the agenda here, you're going to set a committee up to try to replace our nine one one director. Any of you know what qualifications are for nine one one director for our state?
Do you know what?
Qualifications for a nine one one director in our state.
Qualifications. Yes, there's qualifications for certain classes that they have to have. Yes. I don't know exactly what they are. No.
I've got copies here from, uh, West Virginia University of Job Scripture, my approach.
Our administrator was looking up that information.
May I give these to you? There's copies for all commissioners. They want them in here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm presenting them for the simple purpose, after, again, seeing this play tonight, try to prevent the good old way or buddy-buddy system that runs from there, this coun- this county, and looks like it's going to end up being again. Many years ago, for all these people, uh, I don't even think remember, Roger, come on board. This commission, this county was in terrible shape. Am I right, Lauren? Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt. M and Jerry and Doc worked their butts off countless hours, a lot of them. Nobody even realized it to get this county, the state we're at today. I know Roger's not perfect, but I'll tell you what. I know what he's done for this county and for people to jump all over for some of his faults. Totally ungrateful. Unbelievable. Regarding the firing of Mr. McKenzie, you did it without any thought, any contingency plan. You automatically give it to the sheriff. He qualified to run the thing. He said in the, I listened to the video. He didn't say he was qualified. He didn't say his deputy was qualified. What are we going to do if we have a major emergency tomorrow?
There are things in place.
Oh, there are things in place.
There are things in place.
Oh, they're going, we're already waiting to see that. Takes years for somebody to get in place.
I swear. The thing would have been that. So let me answer you there. It's already set up, and it was set up beforehand that, that years ago, that there is an agreement with Hampshire that if something happens with our nine one one, all calls will go through Hampshire County. I have also been called by several people who have said that if things go sideways at our nine one one, give them a call. They have contacts, and they're more than willing to come in and help out and help get it straightened up.
And that was all in place before you fired Mr. McKenzie.
The, the.
You knew, you knew, you were aware of all that before you fired Mr. McKenzie.
The thing with Hampshire County was, yes.
And you knew that?
Yes.
Never brought up in the meeting again last week, not a mention of it, not a mention of anybody, no, anybody. Sounds pretty suspicious to me. Anyway, a much smarter thing and a little bit common sense intellect would have been to give Mr. McKenzie notice. Sixty-nine days, right? Take, find a person, make sure you give them time to learn our system, whatever it needed to be done. Wasn't very bright. I'm sorry, guys. I don't care about any, any measure of intelligence. That wasn't very bright at all. I don't know what your reasons were. You won't give any reasons why you, why you fired him without any just cause, but that's the way it goes. Mr. Whitlock, is it correct in stating what Luke accused you of that he asked you point-blank if you had to come to the meeting and there was a chance of him being this one, and you told him no? Is that true?
At the time, it was true.
Outright lie. That's terrible trait to have a county commissioner. I'm sorry. I'll tell you what. I wonder what kind of moral compass and Christian principles you two work on when in the middle of a snow emergency you fire a man that's feeding six kids without any justification again. Sole supporter of him, coldest winter we've had in years. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Where's your compassion? If you ever do as a pastor, if you're a pastor, if you ever do a sermon on compassion, understanding, make sure you don't become a hypocrite when you're saying. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rodney Liken.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Liken. I'm here as a citizen. As previously mentioned, first I want to say I appreciate the comments made by Commissioner Stags and Dr. Kerbers. Obviously I was at the last meeting and I personally want to address Mr. Leatherman's unprofessionalism on how he handled a meeting. Of course I came in at the tail end of it, but after watching the, the full video, you permitted members of your family, whether you recruited them to come here or not, to berate Commissioner Stags and Commissioner Whitlock. And you know as well as I do, and I'm certain there's other members here that would verify that if I talked to you, the way that you allowed those people to address these two commissioners, I would have been carried out of this room. For you to allow that to go on for quite some time. Two hours. We'll talk about professionalism. That was totally unprofessional. Additionally, whenever I made the comment to your granddaughter, right, about, I believe I have the floor. You looked me dead in the eye, Roger. You looked me dead in the eye and you told me you will not be disrespectful and I responded and I said, I can't be disrespectful.
I looked at both of you.
You told me you ain't going to do it here.
Directly behind you and I looked at both of you and said, be respectful. Exactly what I said.
You always have a way of. That's a good word for it. To try to cover your tracks. Post, post incident.
Look at the, you can see what it did.
Exactly.
And I looked at both of you because she was sitting directly behind you and I said, be respectful to both of you. I did not mention your name.
She was sitting behind me to my left.
She was, yes.
Yes, exactly. I have a lot of experience in paying attention to who's in a room. Like I know how to read a room, right? Been in law enforcement, firing EMS for, law enforcement for seventeen years, firing EMS for almost thirty. Right? So I've been around. And again, one of the best things that's ever happened to this county is Dr. Kerbers and I'm not saying that because I sure don't get any kickback from it. But I can tell you that members of my department, which is Burlington Fire Department, we take a beating all the time, right? But my members over there appreciate everything that she has done. She has made the relationship that we have with our mutual aid companies a little better. And right here's a man that would probably agree.
Absolutely.
So I know my time is almost up, but I would also like to highlight what Mr. Craig Cox has addressed. My name is on the petition and I think that you of all people should know that even if the writing is on the wall, then in the best interest of this county, it probably is the best interest of this county that you step down.
So you don't think the two that told lies should? What lies? They had meetings behind closed doors.
I don't know anything about that, but.
You will.
Big question.
Do you have proof of that?
No, do you have proof of that? Then you're speaking in opinion.
I talked to a gentleman.
You're speaking in opinions.
Don't interrupt.
First off, we're out of order. We need to come back to order. Okay? That does end the public comment section. I don't have anybody else signed up here as a yes.
I want to make a statement. Now I'm going to tell you something. I've never been against you. I questioned it a little bit and I got a question I want everybody here to answer. Did I question the chase car when it first come on? I questioned it, but I voted for it. Did I question her when she come on? I questioned it, but I've seen some of the good things that she's done. I'm not opposed to you. But I do want to ask you people one question. We don't have the money to do this. Opioid money has paid for it this year. What are we going to do to raise the hundred thousand dollars approximately to keep this going from, from West Virginia University? And I.
Can I, can I answer? My, my.
Well, we're not allowed to damage your, your, your show.
So yeah, the opioid funds run out in Maine, but we have been in talks about other supplemental forms of funding for
We have, we've had.
Not just for the buy down to keep the doctor involved, but our fleet is, the newest ambulance we have is a twenty seventeen and everything costs five hundred percent more than it did. I feel that there's plenty of opportunity for you guys to protect the citizens and create just a little more revenue. Every county around us is running on millions.
How can we create where? That's what I want to know. Without putting the burden, without putting the burden on our people. How?
Well, I mean,
How?
It would be your job to figure that out, but I would tell you that the Potomac, the Potomac State College option is, is an opinion that I. Um, I know there's been some drawback because the students may live in Mineral County or their parents may pay taxes. But it's a minimal, a minimal amount of money and it would benefit the county greatly. The hotels and tourism is there. And personally, you know, uh, the departments, I think, I can get the departments if we had to, to help out a little bit.
I've talked to the Argeus Office about raising money from the college.
Yeah.
And you know what they told me?
What?
She said, the lady I talked to, I can't remember her name. She said, if I was you before I put any fees on anything, I would hold off and see what happens to another county here that states to send their lawsuits there. And that is a fact.
Well.
I mean, I don't, the last thing I want to see is people be charged a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars extra on your taxes. I don't want to see.
That would be a huge amount of money for twenty seven thousand. All right. Get out of order again. You had your hand up.
I'd also like to add one to that. Do what every other fire department does or EMS department in the state does is apply for grants. There are hundreds of thousands of grants out there that would be more than willing to cut.
Mr. Lonnie? I just, I hear, I keep hearing you paying money from the opioid grants. Do we have a drug problem in this county, Sheriff? Opioid money that was meant to fight drugs and we put in the ambulance. I know in a roundabout way that helps us, but I believe as a citizen, that opioid money should have been spent, what it was meant to do is educate people, try to stop this drug addiction.
Okay, okay. So if you listen to what I said, per treating, teaching people to treat patients correctly. Then when they get, maybe I didn't say that part. I might skip that part. Go ahead. Yes, you go ahead.
We are doing exactly that. We run Narcan administration training courses. We set them up for the laypeople. We've set them up for the park rangers. We've set them up in the boat techs. And any other school or program that's liked us to do that, we've done that for them. So we actually are doing exactly what you're asking already.
I'm saying, wouldn't have been better spent to prevent these drug addictions in the first place.
That's what we're trying to do. Preventative education to prevent them.
You're treating the addicts, you're not stopping the addicts.
So preventative medicine prevents overdose. Education helps to prevent overdose. I don't think we have enough time to get into the, the medical problem, which is addiction, which is a medical problem, just like diabetes is a medical problem. It changes your brain composition. So I don't think it's really appropriate to call people addicts when they have what's called opioid use disorder. So that's a derogatory stigmatizing term addicts. We don't like to say that. It's inappropriate because this is a medical condition. So I'm not going to comment on addicts. But yes, I help treat opioid use disorder and educating our community and educating those people when unfortunately they do overdose and come see me on an ambulance or my medics or my EMTs or an emergency room, that's when we try to intervene. Yes. So we are doing exactly what you're saying. You just don't see it. But if you'd like to come sit in on one of our educational sessions, I would love for you to be there.
I would sit in a session for you preventing the addiction in the first place.
Opioid use disorder, sir.
Liberal claims you use all those.
It's not liberal. It's a medical scientific terminology.
Again, I'd like to see a section preventing addiction. That's why I'm saying, thank you.
Methadone doesn't prevent addiction.
Correct.
Excuse me.
Education. Yeah, he has no idea.
All right. So we are at the end of public comment section and I just want to point out the number of people that are in here. And, and I think that the number of people are in here to see the results after last week. I feel like there's a lot of people in here to help support me and Jason and I really appreciate that. Especially after there was a comment last week about the people that was here to support Luke and how many people would have been and support us. And I think this shows it and there's, I don't know how many people is on Zoom and I don't, I don't know who's here for or against or anything, but I really appreciate everybody coming out. I really appreciate everybody cooperating. Uh, we're going to, we're going through the business of the county that we're supposed to be here for. Uh, again, I'm going to, I'm going to burn through some of this pretty quick and we may skip over a few things. First, I have to get my glasses on so I can read. All right, correspondence. Officer the Assessor. Get past any names. Officer the Assessor. Uh, so she has on here dog taxes collected, county dog four eighty, four hundred and eighty dollars, municipal dogs, eighty seven. And then she has, uh, where ninety percent of the dog, the county dog taxes are paid out, four thirty two. But she brought in, she collected five hundred seventy one dollars of revenue and dispersed out five seventy one. Next thing's Dog Warden. Uh, she picked up nine dogs, seventeen cats, five dogs are carryover. He's had twelve calls, one hundred and one complaints. Uh, four dogs and seventeen cats were sold or given away. Uh, she's picked up five hundred and seven dollars of money turned in. Next we have a letter written nation. I taught Washington design position. My last day will be February thirteenth. I believe he took a full-time position at Potomac Valley. Uh, the next one is a U S Small Business Administration Information for Disaster Assistance. We have pamphlets up here. Basically just goes through different stuff. For disaster citizens, if anybody wants to see that, please see the clerk. She can get you that information. Honor Flight, West Virginia, request for funding. So we have an Honor Flight, North Central West Virginia. Honor Flight is a nonprofit organization that was formed in two thousand and five with the sole mission of transporting American veterans to Washington DC free of charge. The purpose is to see the memorials that have been built in their honor. America has felt it was important to build these memorials and Honor Flight feels it is equally important that the veterans get to see their memorials. Since two thousand and five, over two hundred thousand veterans nationwide have gotten this opportunity. We have over a hundred and fifty plus chapters covering forty five states. Uh, Honor Flight, North Central West Virginia is open to many veterans who served in capacity prior to June fifth, nineteen seventy five. Priorities given to terminally ill veterans from any conflict in World War Two veterans. We accept applications from any of these veterans in West Virginia who are willing to make a trip. Our spring trips are planned for April twenty fourth, twenty fifth and twenty sixth and May fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth. All fall, our fall trips have yet to be scheduled. Each trip will cost approximately twenty thousand dollars. So this is basically, there's asking for donations. Is this something we usually give to or?
No, this is something new, but.
Okay, it is something.
So they had, also had pamphlets there for amounts you pledge. It's not just to the commission, but individuals can donate as well. And they also had adopt a veteran and the application for the veteran application.
Okay. So if anybody wants that information, please see the clerk. She can get that for you. Of course, that's in April, May. So that's our budget's going to be for next year. Okay. Oh, here's a, here's a donated sheet. Donate form, adopt a form. Okay, that's cool. Mineral County Emergency Medical Service Monthly Report for January twenty twenty six. God's EMS had a total of sixteen calls, transported six. I don't know. And they'll need to go through all of them. I don't think. That's just how many calls the, the fire ran on each squad.
Basically, the summary of that is that December and January were our highest number of calls for the county for EMS nine one one calls. We had large numbers of transports. We also, which is really great, had a lot of our volunteer paramedics and EMTs showing up. I believe that January was the highest number of medics within our county that canceled the chase car because their agency was fully staffed, which is phenomenal. Um, so that also goes to show that EMS in our county is thriving, not dying, which is another misconception. Cars doing great. We have educational sessions set up. We actually are teaching a blood class at Grant County and the state office of EMS personally asked us to run over in Petersburg. That's this week on, uh, what was it? Yeah, at ten AM. If you don't have your blood certification and you'd like to, please attend. We'll have our QA committee meeting upcoming. And then anything else you'd like us to attend within the county, please reach out. And our blood program just started, which is phenomenal. The Cam Duncan Free Hospital Blood Initiative in honor of Cam Duncan, who I think everybody knows his story, his family, Johnny, April Peyton, were very happy that they allowed us to, to utilize, uh, Cam as our main figurehead for this. Um, he deserves it. Their family deserves it. And like I said, this is a privilege that we have this in this community.
And we're the second county to have.
So we are the first rural county. There's a couple others that are more cabin county down, you know, Charleston area. The Audridge hunting, uh, excuse me, Godridge, Harrison, Mon, those are big counties. For when the first worlds, which is really awesome. And Potomac Valley Hospital has been instrumental.
Let's go into old business, boards and appointments, nine one one advisory, ballot commissioners. So it's to do with the nine one one about advisory. Joel, you want to take that?
Policy later on, but just the members. I don't know that we clarified the membership. Any.
Nine one, is the members clarified? Who's on that, who's on that advisor board? I know that myself, Mr. Simpson and Mr. Shipley. Other than that, I don't know who else was on.
Well, we need letters to come forward to to submit to the next commission meeting then.
For us?
No, I think you were approved.
He was approved.
And Shipley. We haven't, we haven't, Shipley's came to the meeting yet.
So it's, so this. So we talked last meeting about, or at one point about.
Policy for the nine one one.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, but who else was going to be on that? It was, uh, an EMS person, a fire person, deputy. And then was there going to be a member at large? Is that right?
Was it Steve Rexer?
It was. Um, and then it had, it actually had emergency medical service and then, um.
That was the ambulance authority rep.
It had medical and then it said emergency service and then it had fire, law, member at large and commissioner, county or government.
Oh, yeah, the nine one one.
My, and I had recommended that we had somebody from the city of Kanso.
Which was the.
That's what the nine one one center also dispatches for.
Well, nine one one also dispatches originally too. I don't know who we went, that's not nearly a very big city, but
just, I don't know the majority of the calls, a lot of the calls, I'd say it's called a function in this area.
Okay.
That's the only reason why.
Questioner says, I would highly recommend a dispatcher, someone that maybe as well.
Okay.
I think it's.
Can you talk to somebody and get a name?
I can.
And have them submit a letter.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then ballot commissioners.
Ballot commissioners. The current ballot commissioner for the Democrat Party is Lloyd Hardy and the Democrat chair requests that Mr. Hardy be reappointed. And on the Republican, uh, the Republican chair has, uh, Harry Copeland is the ballot commissioner and the chair wishes to reappoint Harry Copeland on the Republican ballot.
The Democrat is Lloyd Hardy.
Lloyd Hardy. And Harry Copeland for, for Republican. As a two-year term.
Okay. You need, you need no questions for that?
Yes.
I'm motioning that we support our party and Harry Copeland and ballot commissioners, whether it's another part of the Republican party.
I agree, I agree with that.
And they are the current members, so it's just renewing.
Motion carries. Update on courthouse courtroom improvement project. Do you have anything right now?
So I met with, uh, I had some feedback from the judges. Um, we did have it approved planned. Um, so I'm met with our architect last week. My, my day's around the others, maybe Monday. So I need to take that information back to the judges and make sure that they're good and then we'll get it approved through Supreme Court again. I know there's a lot of stuff right now. But basically we'll get there and then I'll go through the section one oh six process to get it approved. So working on it, it's just a little slower than I had planned. So working on it, it's just a little slower than I had planned.
Okay, so something came up um this past week was the snow and ice melting on the roof of the new, of the additions. Uh and so the roof, if I can explain this, the roof has a standing seam metal roof. The standing seam metal roof sticks up, the seams stick up two and a half, three inches, and there's a bar, they put a bar across it to stop the snow. The problem is that bar is up on top of the seam, so there's a two and a half, three inch gap below it in the valley. So we was getting chunks of ten inch wide, two and a half inch thick ice rolling off the roof. Um there should have been plans to put uh sealers or, or some kind of a metal bar in the middle to stop that. Uh that was not, uh when I, I called Fair Chance, I called the um, I called Zach. And then uh Mr. Dittmore called me back, Jeremiah. And he told me that that was not on the plans, and it should have been on the plan, our architect should have had them on the plans, and they're not. So we were exploring options to, he acted like his roofer did not want to come down uh to Mineral County to take care of that. So we wanted to pay somebody else to do it, but I got, we have to still work with them to put the right thing on. So the warranty on the roof, we're still saying, that's kind of the issue there. Uh maybe we won't get any more snow and ice in a while. I'll be okay with that, so um but anyway, that is a, uh it's a pretty good hazard that we need to address and, and we're working on. Uh update on the C D B G C V Health Department Facility Project, anything? Update on opioid funding, I do have uh, I do have a report, but I'll get that on the, for the next agenda to get the food order. Get that next payment out. Discuss Special Emergency Ambulance Service fee, I don't think we have anything on that right now. Berkeley Surety Notice Cancellation, or I'm sorry, Berkeley Surety Notice of Cancellation Black Rock Windforce.
There was looking into that, I don't know if you heard from their way.
So that's, so that's a um, the, the shoot, bond. That the windmills have to keep. And it gets renewed every year, and it kind of slipped through their cracks to renew it. And but there were, Clearways working on that to take care of that, that has nothing to do with us other than. I believe we're the payout to the bond if something happened there, if they close up or whatever. Discuss approved month-to-month contract with G S D.
So I received an um revised version that added in the thirty-day language, but they can cancel, we can cancel that. We would be on the hook for fees through the end of that thirty-day window um for any work performed. So I do have the contract if we want to sign after, um if we consider it. Uh but at this time, that's what we have to work with, um and I do have time at Lauren, I've reached out and given your contact information. Um and I lead at the nine-one-one center and desk for any help that they can provide. So that they can talk back and forth with the uh I T specialist.
Alright.
So we're getting, we're getting conversation with them now, um. I don't think it's any different than it was, so whatever it was fire.
Lauren, do you know off the top of your head what it was?
I wanna say nineteen hundred, okay.
Uh monthly thirteen sixty-nine. Thirteen sixty-nine sixty-seven.
That's a monthly contract?
It's monthly contract, yeah.
So what we was wanting really was, we already did there about the thirty days.
And we got, they, they had.
And they, and they added that, so do we need a motion to approve that? Are you ready to approve that contract? Are you ready?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
I make a motion that we approve that contract, but T sixty-nine month for G S D.
I agree with that also. Discuss approved maintenance hire, do you have anything on maintenance hire yet?
So we have uh three interviews tomorrow.
Okay.
They're the good, solid candidates, we get through the background process, um hoping to fill it like as soon as possible. Well, it'll be uh, yeah, it'll be custodian, yes.
Uh discuss approved Dog Warden Assistant Hire, is there anything on that?
So that's posted, um we have a lot of candidates, actually we have a ton of it, um a ton of interested people. And right now, we have a part-time person.
Okay.
So filling in until that's.
Oh, the part-time, is that, are they on the road, or is that just to clean the building?
Just in the, in the building, assisting with weekend work and cleaning.
Okay, alright. Uh discuss our sheriff, review and discuss approved policy regarding off-duty use of vehicles.
I'd like to hear that too, at the meeting.
Yeah, so just a word, Joel, the uh, in a conference yesterday, some things came up, and it was actually discussing this very thing. We really need to look at the policy perter and discuss that with two things, the Ethics Commission and with our risk pool. Both of those could be in issue with that, okay? New business, discuss approved mold testing cost estimate for magistrate area, is that this bulbs?
It is, so um we had the initial testing done, and there was no toxic mold found. Or, you know, we'd be taking other action at this point, um but this is, I have recommendation to that contractor that did the testing. Uh they believe we need a hygienist to come in and do the cover, just to ensure that there's not, nothing missed. Um it is a twenty-three hundred dollar test.
Okay. Now the twenty-three hundred dollars, we're gonna deal with the mold. It's just a test, it's a testing.
It's testing.
So what's your all's pleasure on that?
Gotta be done.
I'll make a motion that we approve this testing.
I agree with that also. Best twenty twenty-four crisis response principle, critical incident monies, eighteen thousand dollars.
So I think I want to move that to next meeting if we can.
Yep.
Um I want to do a little bit more research on it, it was brought to my attention um recently, and I don't know enough about it.
Okay, Mr. Stack. My wife had, as a social worker, she expressed interest to Luke about trying to put a team together. I'm also in discussion, because I've been the first vice president of State Fire Association, with the EMS Coalition. Uh and we're going to get together and try to put something together, like a resource binder for everybody. So that might be something I can get to later and talk about.
Yeah, that would be great.
So this is like a C I T.
Yes, yes, and like.
Seminar on that last.
In year.
Like counselors for fire EMS and.
Some money there that wasn't new, that what I got, I just don't know about it, it's years back, so.
Make sure, make sure when you look it up in the Senate, just research it for fire EMS and law enforcement, all, we all, we all see it.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, so I went to a seminar last year, or a conference last year, and it was about that, and a lot of really good information, and then come back and. Got ran into a wall, but like, I was told that we didn't need to have this counting, so.
Yeah, there was.
I should have sued him or so, but anyway. Alright, discuss approved prosecuting attorney's office work orders.
Um so I just wanted to bring the attention, um it was not part of the remodel, prosecuting attorney's office. Um they do have some things that need to be done, I would like to gather some estimates, um I worked with Jeff in maintenance. Um mainly the uh carpeting, because it's bungee up, where you trip over it. And there's missing um tiles on the ceiling where there's like cables hanging. So I'd like to get a better estimate, he got some measurements sent for me, and then I'll bring that back.
Okay.
If we're able to do that.
Charlie, you want to say anything?
Here, he's there.
I'm just here if you guys have any questions, I will.
Discuss approved reinvestment of nine-one-one funds.
Um so I received some information from records first united.
Yeah.
Um about how we want to reinvest that money, so I'm not sure.
Did we have a C D mature then?
We did, but um so there's some interest there, I'm, I'm not sure.
Do they have this?
We have options.
Okay.
So they are, I think, could I send you the email, Lauren? I'm not looking.
See it.
Okay, so let me go through those, and I can bring that back up if you like.
Okay. Question, question, how much we have in that fund, did she say?
She does have it right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, and that, and that C D was a. Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars indeed.
Thank you. But we are in full state. Sheriff, uh discuss approved policy for nine-one-one advisory board.
Think we kind of covered that.
Alright.
Commissioner Stack.
Yes, sir.
I know it's kind of out of order, but I. I'd really like the citizens of Mineral County to know one thing about nine-one-one, any birds responders. If there's disaster that's going to happen in this county, I've got full faith in all the responders to handle that disaster. And that goes from fire, EMS, and law. And I also have full faith in every dispatcher that's setting up that portal, nothing has changed there. This time, everything has changed in nine-one-one, and all this has been carried on, is ninety percent administrative stuff. So I want the citizens of Mineral County to feel safe and home, and to know that EMS, fire, and law. Will respond to our emergencies, just like they have been through the past fifty or sixty years in this county.
None of the protocols have changed if something happens, it still rolls the same way it would have, had nothing changed the past two weeks. Everything is still set up, contacts are listed, everybody knows who's contacting who, so we're good.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stack.
Yeah, and just to add to that, we had one of the largest M C I's in the state of West Virginia a few months ago. And the former O E M director wasn't there. So we had unified command set up, we had multi-county response, we had commissioners respond, we had everybody respond.
Other members of the O E M staff.
Other members of the O E M staff, and he was not there, so things are still gonna, we're still gonna take care of our people, that's what we do.
Alright, reaffirm the motion for termination of O E M nine-one-one director.
So this is um, um I need to just. Be transparent and apologize um for uh when we determined terminated Luke from all county employment. On January twenty twenty-seven, twenty-sixth. It wasn't in the agenda the way that it should have been. So this is directed by that situation of when I made the motion. For Luke to uh no longer be employed by the Mineral County. And on top of that, for the, for the sheriff to temporarily take and run the uh nine-one-one center and O E M. Until that position is filled, and we would post it immediately. So that's, that is um me learning, and it's my fault that I, that I uh did not have it on the agenda the right way that it should have been. And so I am, uh I make the motion that terminate Luke McKenzie's employment from Mineral County. On January twenty-seven, twenty-sixth, and for the sheriff to temporarily appoint, to be appointed over the nine-one-one center. And as soon as the position is posted and filled, the sheriff will be stepped away from that. And uh so that's, that's my motion, and she'll post it as soon as possible. And on top of that, a motion, now that I made the mistake, uh two weeks, I also Luke uh. Be his salary um for the last two weeks be um, and stated to him for the last two weeks from that mistake that I made as well. So he, his employment will be terminated, um as of today, as of our intent. Hope that sounded pregnant.
So your motion is that he terminated.
Yep.
Although he was terminated twenty-seven, but he will be paid up till today.
Yes.
Only issue with that is like, we've already done benefit termination. You change it to another month, I'm just gonna. And then just the pay or the actual pay determination?
Um the actual pay of the last two weeks according to what is, like basic budget would be.
Do you want me to do a memo, come out, send a memo?
Well, um I um, I, if I just need somebody to second that, if that's.
I'll second that motion.
Again, I, I am sorry to the citizens of Mineral County for not um going that properly, because I've been learning this process. And um thank you for your grace in all this.
Uh next thing on the agenda. Prove to reinstate Jessica Livers part-time telecommunications for nine-one-one.
Yeah, she was a, a former employee.
Yeah.
And uh she had been coming back and forth, but they're just requesting that she be reinstated as a part-time, it'd been some time since she's been there.
I'll second that motion. I agree, was this on the agenda later, is that why the store is at?
Yes, but they needed her, and that's why.
I understand, so we'll, we'll go ahead and make it effective today, but we need to put her back on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I did skip over that, my bad. Uh discuss approval, O E M nine-one-one director job description and pay, you have that?
So I do have job description, um the one you provided me with is very close to what I have. I was actually at, they had health this at the nine-one-one center, so I, we have record of it. Um so it'd be very similar, um I guess we need to, I need to know if we're going to move forward with two positions. Or one position, um and a range, the salary range that we posted.
I would like to move forward with one position like it was. Okay, replacing, replace it the way that it was, is what I would like to do. And I'll make, I'll make that as a motion, replace one with one person.
I'll second that.
Um probably the salary range would be similar to what uh, what we do with administrator, I think, I think fifty to seventy thousand for salary range. Based on experience, I'll make that motion to post it with fifty to seventy thousand, based on experience.
Um then I will post that, um as early as I know, I'll post tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Back to question.
Yes, sir.
How, who's gonna be filling these interviews and hiring this?
The nine-one-one advisory board.
What was that? I said, I don't, they didn't, you didn't list our, our, in the, under the duties and description of the nine-one-one book.
Board government, okay.
I was just gonna say, we, 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 we used to have, but they played first.
Alright, um we'll move on along here real quick. Administrator's report.
I've gone and covered everything.
But that.
I've covered everything, that was my answer.
Well, Colby Simpson, you actually have an appointment, but you also signed up for public speaking.
Yeah, I, I, I don't uh.
Can we use that time slot to just lay forth the claim that we're absurdly over budget? I don't know how you can be over budget when you don't have a budget, number one. Number two, I broke down in this folder, line by line, and this took me hours of my time. That I worked for, for free here at times, because this was over my hours that I'm required to give. Do any of you work for free? I think the answer is no. Hours of my time, line by line, it's line by line, color-coded, highlighted. Circle, line, every single expense since July one is on this paper. This is not opinion, this is not hearsay, this is directly from the accountant, this is fact, facts. No fake, well, I heard from this person, or I heard from that person, right? This is every single thing, to the cent, I mean, we have a fifty-five cent charge on here, silly, right? I spent an eternity doing this, okay? And then sat on my phone, and for an absurd amount of time, because I'm crazy. Did additions and subtractions, and wrote all of them down, and triple thousand time checked it. Startup costs for this program, the total, the total, a hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred five dollars and forty-four cents. Seventy-seven thousand, five hundred sixty dollars and twenty-eight cents was startup cost, which was approved by a working committee. That was appointed by the county commission. Prior to the inception of this, to determine the financial feasibility of this program. That committee, it was a working committee, it was not a board, working committee, right? Was approved by the commission, this startup cost was discussed, it contained myself, Roger Reel, Luke McKenzie, Jason Whitlock. And Michael Shrikis, who's a third-party E M, EMS physician for the state of West Virginia. Um through these uh, the West Virginia universities for this program. We approved these startup books by expedences, we approved, these were big-ticket items, right? Cardiac monitor, ventilator, I V pumps, initial supplies, we discussed at that point in time. We discussed at that point in time salaries for part-time, full-time, for EM employees, et cetera, all that was approved. So those startup expenses were approved by that committee. It was also deemed by that committee already that this program was financially feasible. So I wanted to bring that up because there was a letter presented at the last meeting questioning, should we look at a committee to deem if this was financially feasible? We've already done that, and if you'd like to view it, you can watch it on YouTube, it's in a meeting, recorded, right? If you forgot, it seems like we keep forgetting a lot of things here, it's all recorded, that's the great thing about technology these days. That was approved. If you take those startup expenses and you subtract them from the total, you get forty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty, six hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. That was the total cardiac monitor, startup expenses, IV pump, associated charging tools, et cetera, right? Take that away from the startup, twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars, okay? Blood equipment and supplies purchased within that, fifteen thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars, fully reimbursed by Potomac Valley Hospital and a donation. Wonderful human beings, Mark Foucault has wanted to support us greatly, it's been amazing, right? So that was given back to us, okay? Greg Cox has written over two hundred fifty thousand dollars of grant funding for us. We've already acquired more than half of our ultrasound costs, which was just shy of five thousand dollars back from local communities who want to support us to do better, right? These grants are coming in, we have grants for extrication gear out there, we have grants for, you know, safety and security measures and things like that, we have all these things that we're hearing back from, okay? So that's another thing. We had to purchase a one thousand dollar Lucas CPR device for, it was exactly nine hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents because Valley Medical returned it broken. So that's another math we had to incur. Valley Medical returned our old chase car with a hole in the roof and the liner down that they did not fix. We will have to pay to fix that and file an insurance claim for it, okay? We have still not received back from them despite multiple requests, the portable pager with its charger and the portable radio with its charger. Those are very expensive, you're in fire and EMS, how much does one of those radios cost? Greg Cox, you just got them, how much do they cost?
Uh, the new ones that we got were nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand dollars, a radio, it's still not back. That's not that radio, but if we have to purchase a new one.
We could look at Roger, twenty-five hundred bucks for portable, probably.
Twenty-six.
Okay, so twenty-six hundred dollars for a new radio that is ours, the county owns that property, right? We still haven't gotten it back, so everybody's putting us in a hole already to start. So seventy-seven thousand and change startup expenses, forty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents has been payroll in seven months. We paid Valley Medical just shy of eleven thousand, five hundred dollars a month for payroll. If my math is correct, eleven thousand, we'll just say eleven thousand, breezy numbers, times seven is seventy-seven thousand, correct? In seven months, we've only spent forty-nine thousand in payroll. What's the difference on that?
Seven months.
Seven.
Seven, when did it start?
Okay, so five months, so fifty-five thousand versus forty-nine, and it's more than fifty-five because it's eleven-five, right? So we've already saved money in payroll alone, right? And our employees are doing things for free that they're not getting paid for, okay? Plus, that doesn't include Valley Medical Transport's recent increase in their payments or, excuse me, in the salaries of their employees, which could have gone upwards of twenty percent depending on how long you've been at the company. Lauren Trentor, who is making thirty-three dollars an hour, she would be making almost fifty. We're not paying remotely close to that, who would have covered or incurred that cost? This county, right, to pay, people don't work for free there, we would have to pay for them. So we're saving astronomical amounts of money, medical supplies, ten thousand, eleven dollars and fifty-four cents, okay? That included portions of the blood product equipment that was already reimbursed. If you take all of these away, plus maintenance and fuel of the vehicle, which would be the exact same that Valley Medical Transport would be paying because we're using the same Route twenty-eight auto. We're doing the exact same thing in terms of timeline of oil changes, timeline of vehicle maintenance, and we purchased winter tires, which Valley Medical did also for seven years every winter. Take those costs away, that they'd be doing the same exact things, right? We'd be doing the same things, we have only spent seven thousand dollars in, in this time period. And that money has only gone to purchase, excuse me, to repurchase and replace supplies that we use when we try to save your life. So those stickers we put on your chest for an EKG, we have to buy them again, right? IVs, we have to buy them again. If we put pads on to shock you, we have to buy them again. We have to buy all of that equipment to replace, seven thousand, one hundred dollars in that time period is, is absurdly low. Anyone in EMS and fire will understand how frugal we have been financially. So to say that we've gone over budget is just a lie. So I don't know where this is being told to you. I request that everyone here, if they'd like, they can come up and add the numbers up on the paper themselves. Do this work, it takes hours, do it. Whoever is telling you that is lying to you, it is creating division in our county, it is spreading misinformation, it is fear mongering. Please stop, we are super transparent, come up to the office, request, email us, find us on Facebook, request a meeting. This is not a secret, the car is bright blue, you can't hide it. Please, all we want is to take care of people, and I'm not understanding the obsession that has created, been created about this car and this program. Because quite frankly, I'm sorry to say, there's way bigger problems in this county than this car. It's not done anything negative. Tell me one negative thing that my employees on that car have done. We've saved people's lives, we show up on scene, we do our job. Please leave us be to do our job. Every time people interfere, it hinders our ability to practice medicine. And the only people that suffer, it's not me, I don't have to be here. No one does, the only people that suffer is the community, so when you call nine one one, you hope that blue car shows up. You hope an ambulance shows up to work alongside us as a team. Please, this is fact, it is not opinion. Stop spreading false opinions. If you'd like to see this, I'd be happy to stay after on my own free time to go through it with you, thank you.
How much have we got in it so far, do you know?
Uh, I can get that number for you, yes.
I'm gonna tell you right now, I'll tell you something. I am not one to put money figures on saving lives, I am not, because I think it's the most important thing to do. But now, what does, what does it cost a county to buy your town from West Virginia University Hospital?
The buy down?
Nothing.
Don't, don't we pay them?
No, you paid zero dollars.
Their money's not gonna be there forever. I don't know, how much?
That's my buy down, it's listed in my proposal, I can show you.
How much money do we pay, uh, uh?
I'm not gonna misspeak a number, so we'd have to pull up the contract in order to do that, I can't off my head tell you a contractual number and misspeak, but I don't.
What was the last year?
We'd have to pull up.
No, no, you got me finished. Ninety, last year it was approximately ninety-seven thousand dollars, and that was opioid money. That was agreed for one year, and that was it. We, we, we have not agreed or talked about or wanted to continue doing it after May.
That has nothing to do with what we're doing.
Well, I'm just asking. I'm asking.
Well, I'm not gonna misspeak and give a number that I don't know the answer to.
Are we gonna have to pay that ninety-seven thousand every year?
I don't know the answer to your question.
If we continue the contract, it should.
We should pay the ninety-seven thousand every year.
If we continue the contract, if we can't afford it, then we won't.
Okay, because what I'm getting at here, ninety-seven, ninety-seven thousand dollars approximately, right?
So that didn't come out of the EMS budget for our EMS levy or anything, so I'm not understanding the correlation here that's getting at.
If, if, if we're running on budget, we're running actually on budget, did you, did you figure the ninety-seven thousand?
No, sir, because it didn't, it didn't cost EMS's county what we're doing with this, anything it came from an opioid fund. You're comparing apples with tires, not even in the same fruit category.
We have that invested in WVU, correct?
Through opioid funds.
Okay, I'll, I'll answer, I'll answer your question. What, hold on, wait, let me, let me answer your question. How many trainings, sir, how many trainings were done in this county prior to my arrival? No, it makes sense.
Oh, I don't know.
Zero, the answer's zero, in thirty years. So hold on, let me finish. Do you know what it costs to bring somebody in to run a course?
No idea.
Okay. It costs hundreds of dollars an hour to do so. I'm doing them for free, last, in the last year, I've done twenty-seven trainings. I've also brought in, not myself alone, hold on, I have brought in WVU Medicine EMS physicians who charge three hundred fifty dollars. I mean, what's, what's the cost of a physician, I don't even know, three hundred feet an hour at this point, if you work in an ER probably. I brought Health Net and their entire SIM truck, right? I've had.
The medical director for the children's ER to do a pediatric training.
Correct, I've had numerous other people come and spend their time for free here, which would cost thousands of dollars for free. So I think if we tallied it up, it probably would equate to about ninety-seven thousand, a thousand dollars of work that I've brought to this county. And that's not continuing to show that we've done, since July, fifteen community volunteer service events through this vehicle. I have them all listed, I can read them to you if you'd like.
But my question was, I mean.
It probably is a wash.
What?
What you would pay in fees for those trainings probably would equate to the amount.
Right, I don't know.
So I don't understand your point.
My point is this, we had to pay ninety-seven thou, approximate ninety-seven thousand, I don't know the exact amount, to West Virginia University, am I correct?
In order for me to work here instead of in the ER, yeah, I'm not doing it for free.
If we have to do that every year, my question is, where's the money gonna come from?
You, you don't have to do anything every year.
If we buy, in order for you.
That would be a choice and a vote.
In order for you to stay on, do we have to do that? That's all I'm asking, I'm not.
I am the medical director from Mineral County, and that has nothing to do with buy down. That has to do with the fact that I have a contract as an independent contractor, you need a medical director, there's no going without that, it's, that's the law.
That's.
So that's, that's what I do, regardless of if I buy down or not, that's my job here.
But what I look at, when you said we're under budget, I look at the whole story.
But that's not part of the budget, so you don't.
That's not the whole story, Roger, you're trying to twist the narrative to make it fit what you told everybody in this county. Just give it up.
Steve, I, Steve, I understand, please don't interrupt like that, uh, we're gonna shut this down now. Uh, Roger, you do not understand, you do, you do not understand. If you really wanna do a budget, in the sense of a budget, yes, there's ninety-seven thousand dollars going out, but there's also ninety-seven dollars, thousand dollars coming in from the opioid fund. So there's an in and an out, and, and that, if that contract would continue that she will be teaching here, then that ninety-seven thousand dollars has to come from somewhere, yes. But there is no agreement, there has not been any talks that I know of for that contract to can, continue after April, May, whenever it is.
June, it was July through June.
Okay, July through June.
Um, but regardless, if that contract disappears, fifty point one hours of time that I dedicate to this community, I no longer dedicate to this community. So you will lose all of that time I do for training, you will lose all of that time I spend providing medical command on the vehicle. You will lose all of that extra time I'm available for our community and for community services because I will instead be spending that time working in the ERs.
Okay, Craig, one.
The buy down is, was a nicety and a bonus because we had the opioid.
Right.
Okay, it has nothing to do, that was done way before the chase car, we started chase car going August. That was done in June.
Yes, I know.
Two separate things.
I know that.
And it is a nicety, and you don't understand how nice it is to have a doctor that you can literally look and say, Doc, can I sort of verse that drip on this thirteen-year-old girl who I can't get to break a seizure, got a seizure in forty minutes?
But my question.
Ninety-seven thousand dollars, her buy down was a nicety. It's not a must-have, it is a, we really, really want it, but it's not a, a cut and dried, we have to have, no. And if we don't, if the county doesn't have the money, the last thing Mineral County EMS wants to do is put a burden on this county like King. That, that's it, like, and it's two separate things.
Sorry, Craig, I will allow, Michelle Matthews has her hand up on Zoom.
I got the humble hands up.
As a citizen of Mineral County and also as a chief of one of the EMS departments, I can sit there and say, I love having Dr. Kirby because I also work for a rural EMS department. And I, you, I mean, I don't think you all can imagine what it's like being a citizen, having to wait for an ambulance that, you know, some of our response time is twenty-two minutes. Twenty-two minutes. And I know I have reached out to Dr. Kirby in the middle of the night and asked her questions because our medical director in this county is free. But that's it, free. No trainings, has no clue what's going on, doesn't even know my name. It, it, it's a slap in the face, so I can say as a chief, I can say as a paramedic, I can say as a mom who she taught my daughter in school. If it takes departments helping to pay or do whatever, I'll do whatever. I'll raise whatever. Because I don't want my, my family member to wait twenty-two minutes.
Remember, send the comments button if you guys can find it. Okay, thank you, Michelle, is that all?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, administrators report, do you have anything, Candace? Um, miscellaneous, mission meeting dates, what's the mission?
Just a reminder, next meeting would be, I, uh, gave you our appointments for outside agencies.
Okay.
And, um, I still have to get the department head scheduled yet.
Okay.
Just to get your heads up, keep those dates clear.
Next commission meeting, meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-fourth at four thirty. Yeah, the next regular meeting.
We do have a work session on the thirteenth, and we have a board review and equalization at one. One fifteen for budget request, February nineteenth, we have board review at nine, we have a work session nine fifteen for budget request. February twenty-fourth is gonna be an all-day thing, we have the ballot draw at nine, we have budget meetings at ten, nine fifteen probably if you get this filled in, board review at eleven, and then we have a work session picked back up in the afternoon, and then county commission meeting at four thirty, so.
That's gonna be a long day.
Yeah, I did leave you time for lunch that day.
Oh, thanks.
Haven't had a lunch.
All right, so committee reports, Jason, you wanna start?
We have the board, board of review on February fifth, ten o'clock, obviously for that. Uh, and then February eighth through the tenth, down in Charleston for West Virginia Association of Counties.
And that was you and.
That's.
And.
Candace and good. Yeah, Jill and some people from her office went, Beth and Miranda. Done, you done, Jason?
Yep, Roger. Uh, we've, we've had, actually had a few board review meetings, but I wasn't at the fifth, I couldn't be here. We had one with the second also. And, uh, we had a work session on the third, I was at the park for a meeting on the second, health park meeting on the ninth. And, uh, I went to region eight, signed paper from there, I can't remember what that was, Friday, Thursday, Friday last week.
All right, so, uh, I was on a Zoom call with the National Association of Counties, twenty-eighth. And then, of course, I was right here for the board reviews and the work session like the others. I, so. You have a bit more here, I was on a, on a Zoom call with the, with the kind of, county commissioner association. That was a Friday morning, it was a legislative call, go over legislative bills and stuff that was going through. And then I was at the Association of Counties conference as well. That's, uh, yeah, Friday, I also, I was playing phone tag with Jeremiah Dittenworth about the roof on the, on the foyer house too, so. We finally, they were getting touch and talking about things, I can get back to him, see what, what he's figured out. To put it on there, we can do with the, with that, what I don't want to be. Can you catch me, Charles, did you find out anything about the build of forty-six oh six? Which one is that?
It's probably going to up or reason jail room.
No, but I don't, there were so many bills mentioned down there, I don't recall one about the jail bill, was that one?
It's forty-six oh fifth, I've talked to Gary Howell and Rick Hillbrand, encouraged him to do the best for our counties to afford it. You know, what it is, it's a bill, if, and I agree with it to a point, but, uh, I don't know what Charlie thinks of it myself, but are you familiar with that?
I'm not.
Uh, it's about where, uh, felons, they're holding them in jail. Uh, it's about where, uh, felons, they'll hold them in jail and longer. They won't let some of them, I don't know if all of them, which ones, if it was just the bad ones, I get it. But if they hold all the misdemeanors in jail or felons in jail until their court date, it's gonna, it's gonna kill us as the counties. Vision of jail bill, that's forty-six oh six, which be.
The one that was a hot topic down there was, um, raises for elected officials that they wanna, they wanna put it in the hands of the counties to give the elected officials a raises and add some kind of a scale and uh, talking about a twelve percent raise for all the elected officials. And then some kind of cycle, every time you're re-elected or every time somebody new is elected, then that person, it, yeah. Was it two percent a year? Two or three percent a year. Those two, so if you have like, uh, if you have a four-year term, you get elected. That four-year term, you'll go up two percent every year, so that then whenever you're re-elected or somebody else is new is, is elected in that spot, then the pay would jump up eight percent for, for us commissioners, since we're on a six-year term, it would jump up twelve percent. And then it would go by your term. So what, what would be strange to us, what I think's strange is that when people get, come in, you know, it's anytime you get a raise is when your term starts. So like whoever is elected next, the way I understand it, it'll start the next election cycle or the, the, the next term. Whenever the next person comes in, they're gonna get a twelve percent raise and they're gonna get twelve percent more, paid twelve percent more than the other two commissioners. And then when the next, then two years later, when that person gets elected, he's gonna get, uh, uh, a big raise. And then he'll be making more than the other two commissioners. It's just.
Was there any oppositions? That's the counties?
The counties are working on it, yes.
Cause I don't know how many counties can fill that.
I don't either. That's, that's, that's a, I, I, I think it's a big jump itself, but anyway, that's, that's where we was with that.
That's what, I've been working on the budget and I got all the department heads, their worksheets so they can start um, working on their figures. Um, we are probably gonna have to cut in some areas. I'm really looking at cuts.
Figured. Especially with the real estate taxes that Jill snuck out.
What's your, what's it now? Now she had to return something about her car or something. She says she's that tough.
Um, anyway, so we were down to accounts payable. And, uh, can we make a motion to commissioners, come into the office and we look at them and sign? So I'll make a motion that we approve the accounts payable once at least two commissioners review and initial each bill and purchase orders.
I second that.
Yeah, I agree, all right.
Uh, I make a motion, we approve the exonerations once at least two commissioners review them and initial them.
I'll say.
And I make a motion, we approve the estates once two commissioners approve them or reviews them and puts their initials on them.
I agree with that. I'll say.
Um, I really wanna thank everybody for coming out. Um, I really hope that our meetings can be as organized for the amount of people that's here. Uh, there was some a little bit, but I really hope we can continue this pattern and get our stuff done. We went through a lot of business tonight and we did it in less than two hours. And I'm tickled to death with that. And that was me standing up and doing a twenty-minute speech and getting mad and leaving for ten minutes. And I really apologize for me getting mad like that. I did lose my control, my control, and I really apologize. So apologize to every citizen for the embarrassment over the meetings over the past several months. And I look forward to change. We have, I feel the House Commissioners have some house cleaning to do and some straightening up to do. Look forward to everybody coming back to a meeting. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.